First item of business is the minutes. Is there a motion? Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Next item is approval of the claims.
I move it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Posey. That's fine. Wherever. Don't even come up now.
Could we have Dr. Posey come up here?
Sure, I'd just like to say a couple of things quick first is for the public's benefit. Dr. Posey has been a volunteer medical director with Woodbury County Emergency Services and several of the other departments across Woodbury County for over thirty-five years. Dr. Posey and his wife Lynn, who have been very instrumental in EMS system development across the state of Iowa and across the region. Dr. Posey's wife Lynn actually helped start the paramedic program in the EMS division of Western Illinois Tech was instrumental in that. But Dr. Posey is a volunteer medical director over thirty-five years. We literally work under his license when we're touching a patient in the field, we're touching that patient with his medical license that he puts on the line every time for us in the field. All of our policies and procedures, all the medications that we carry, all the equipment that we use that touches the patient over the last thirty-five years has been had to go through Dr. Posey for approval. As well as everything that we do, he sees our run reports, he critiques our run reports, he gives us feedback. He would deal with any and has dealt with any questions about the way we handle the patient. He does that one-on-one. He's done it in a very dignified, professional way that our EMTs have. He's helped him grow. He's helped him to mature his skills and to really deliver first-class quality care for the patients that we've taken care of in Woodbury County throughout the region. So, we are going to miss him. We do have a replacement for him. Dr. Tom Benzoni has stepped up and is replacing. With me today are a couple of members of my staff. Bob Welch, Bob is a paramedic and has helped work alongside Dr. Posey in all of our policies and procedures and quality assurance. Bob's also on the Danbury squad. And Dawn Zanley, who's our administrative assistant, and Dawn is also on the Anton squad. So, these are just two of our crew members that have been under Dr. Posey's watch and do your job the last thirty-five years. So, I think we've got a clock for you.
Yeah, why don't you step over here?
All right. This isn't a jury, right?
This is a jury.
This is a good thing.
When you get past that door, they're all over the.
As the representative of the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors, we'd like to present to you, Dr. Posey, with this plaque for your thirty-five years of service. Gary, you've done a wonderful job of outlining its history and what you've done for this county for so many years. We appreciate that. Volunteering, ladies and gentlemen, is probably the backbone of this county and what makes it the quality community that we live in. You've been a part of that. You've helped preserve and save thousands and thousands of lives in this community. We do appreciate it, Dr. Posey. And we appreciate the folks that's come in and volunteered with you over those years that you've been many, many years of service. Even before our EMS program was started, you've been a founder of that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. We all appreciate that. Oh, great. Gary, you want to say a few words?
Uh, don't ever ask a doctor if you want to say a few words.
Yeah.
Why don't you step over there so we can get it on the radio too?
I would love to say a few words. First of all, to you, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your service. I'm sure it's a thankless job. Somebody's got to do it. I'm glad that people of your caliber are doing it. I appreciate very much this award, this recognition for what I consider to be a privilege over many years. When I did my job, I was in an environment, a controlled environment. I had plenty of light. I had people to protect my back. And my job is easy compared to what EMS folks do. Because you see every day, they go to work, they realize that they may have to lay their lives on the line. And nine eleven proved that to lots of people, but some of us have known it for a long time. Many people think that the reason that people go into emergency medical care is for the adrenaline rush. That may be part of it. There is a definite personality that is involved with people that go into the emergency medical field. But it isn't that because of Gary and Bob and everyone will tell you that it's ninety-five percent routine. The other five percent can get interesting, but most of it is doing what needs to be done to be ready. And so, the basic personality trait I have found amongst people who are drawn to this profession is that desire to help their fellow man and to make society a better place. Most of their time is spent in training, in maintenance of their equipment, in study for which they spend a lot of money out of their own pockets. And probably most importantly, in training, these people have a compulsion to train those that are coming after. And that's very difficult to put on a line item budget, but it is crucial. And Mr. Blake, and you've mentioned saving lives. I've prevented a lot of people from dying in my career, but these are the guys who saved the lives. They are the ones who will go out when it's twenty below zero or ninety degrees beside the highway where traffic is screaming by them at sixty miles an hour and take the broken bodies out of the cars. And it's a dangerous, nasty job, and they do it. And again, putting a lot of their own time and their own resources. And they're the ones who should be recognized and should be given accolades today. But I certainly thank you for this. That's very much appreciated. Thank you all.
You're welcome.
I just asked you whatever you said to try not to give you a fight.
Thank you, Gary.
Pleasure. See you around.
Hi, Dave.
You hear that? He said, "I'll see you around."
Mark. Mr. Nara. Are you napping on me back there?
Sorry, checking an email. Didn't realize I was up quite so quick. First item I have on the agenda today is a approval of an underground utility permit for Neil Kenny. Neil is proposing to put underground electric in conduit to service an irrigator across the road from his operation.
Move it. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, next item I have is another underground utility permit. This one is for long lines, installing telephone line. It's along Port Neal Road. This will be servicing the new Fly Ash facility they're coming up from, box on the south side of Two Sixtieth North from the Fly Ash facility.
Move it. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Our next item is consider approval of the plans for the CF Industries County Road Grading Project. It'd be easiest if I just put this in the back room and ask you all to sign it before we leave. It's a full-size set of plans for this job. The plans include grading, some special aggregate and GeoNet that's going to be put in the wetland area. What we have left before we can let this project contract is to negotiate easements with Mid-American for the intersection and with CF Industries for the main roadway. That work is ongoing. We're hoping to maybe be looking at letting late November, early December. We'll see what kind of weather we have and see when and whether we can get started yet this fall, so.
Second.
That's to receive for signature.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item, I think we're still a little bit early. Well, and Karen's behind me with others that are similar, but... I don't know if you guys had any requests on anything or our X-nine culvert project is continuing. They're working on this lab. We should be seeing concrete starting to come out of the ground here within the next week. They're on track for a late November completion. Carlson Company is moving in on our project on Knox Avenue, I'm sorry, Lennox Avenue. And that one should also be completed about middle of November. They're thinking about a week construction on that, so. We've got three bridges in the pipeline headed for letting as well as our CF project, our Rise project on Two Sixtieth, and our overlay project on K-25 coming out of Sergeant Bluff and going south to Luton Blacktop or Luton Haven. So, we'll have a very busy year next year.
These three bridges, were they in the...
Two of the three are in the program. And the other one is one that was just already in the program, but the other two are bridges that are in our special bridge funding program.
That wouldn't have gotten done unless we'd done it.
Exactly.
You know, it's been interesting to kind of key in a little bit on the state discourse on rural bridges and roads and trying to figure out how to fund that. And I think, you know, we here didn't wait for all that to be settled. You know, we went ahead and addressed our problem, and it sounds like that was really a good move.
Yeah, and Director Trombino is aware of the efforts that have been done in Woodbury County as well. And our County Engineers Association is in an ongoing dialogue with the Director. He sent out for our review as county engineers, his proposal and plan to the legislature and the governor on future funding for projects. We have some concerns with some of the ideas in that where he's looking at a more of a sales or excise tax on gasoline. Right now, the gasoline tax is constitutionally protected. Every dollar that goes in from registrations, gas tax, fines, goes into the road use tax fund, and it can't be diverted by the legislature to other pressing needs or what they might deem as pressing needs five or ten years down the line. And that was one of our first inputs to the Director is that we need to be looking at any source of funding being constitutionally protected so that we're sure that money is going where the people intended to go. And, you know, folks pay the gasoline taxes to make sure that that money's coming to give them better roads. So, we want to make sure that goes forward in any type of discussion.
Just to reiterate what he's saying, I just got done with my Highway 20, and Stu Anderson was there, and he showed us all the ideas that Director Trombino wants to do. And there's a lot of good ideas, but whether they get passed by the state remains to be seen.
Twenty in there?
What's that?
Was twenty in there?
Um, it's not so much about Highway 20. It's so much about how they're going to start funding, you know, the backlog of not having enough money for the rural roads and bridges.
The latest word I have is that Highway 20 funding is basically very dependent on what happens in the next federally disbursedment. September 2014 is when the current highway bill sunsets. And if they follow patterns in other areas, there's their project... And by patterns in other areas, I mean what's happened with a sequester and spending money as it comes in. We have roughly thirty-two to thirty-five billion a year that comes into the Highway Trust Fund at the federal level. They've been spending over fifty billion a year. That fifteen billion has been made up of general appropriations that are coming in. And the discussion has, the early discussion has been that they spend what's coming into the Highway Trust Fund. And that's what's putting Highway 20 at risk, getting that last thirty-two miles done.
Well, Bertrand's got an open letter to the governor about spending that billion-dollar surplus highway.
We can, we can hope the governor and the legislature might do what this board did, and that's to fund some of their own projects, so. I know Senator Anderson has also had a proposal to use surplus money when it's available for advancing highway projects as well. That's not one that we've been as supportive of because it's really not improving our gas tax and long-term funding outlook. It's not that we wouldn't appreciate short-term money to do things, but again, it's not something that is a reliable source of income that I think is necessary when you look at taking care of a hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-mile road system in this state.
Okay, it's time to open bids.
What we have before us today is work proposed to be done in the Smithland-Pennant-McDonald Protection Project. We have a levee that runs on both the right and the left bank of the Little Sioux River. This work is proposed for the left bank of the river downstream of the Highway 141 Bridge. The Smithland drainage or protection area encompasses both sides of the river, but this project only encompasses one. It's recommendation, it's my recommendation as your engineer in this, that the project costs be applied by levee only to the left bank landowners, and there's only two of those. And that would be Mort, Richard Morthorst and the McCall's. And the breakout of that is in benefit is about ninety-five percent toward the McCall's, five percent toward Morthorst, when you look at the linear feet that were protected. This by no means protects all of that bank. We're looking at doing eighteen-hundred feet of roughly thirty-six-hundred feet of bank that extends from below the bridge to the county line. I guess that's just some background. I have bid tabulation sheets for the board's use and trade the folks in the back what we've been working on with Dennis's help is a way to fund the project. Mr. McCall has pledged money upfront for the project, and then to cover the balance, we were looking at riverboat funds, I believe.
Or local options.
Or local option, the sales tax that would make a loan to completion of the project. This is an expensive enough project to make it very difficult to fund in one year when we're looking at dispersing the cost in the manner of, as we do drainage districts where it's levied against sensitive properties. First, let's see, are we in a public hearing at this point?
Yeah.
Yes. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Open the public hearing.
Motion to open.
Is there anyone to be heard on this item? Is there a motion?
Hearing none. I say we close the open.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So that everybody knows what we're up against with cost on this before the board makes a decision, we scheduled the opening of bids for bank improvement. Last week, the Board of Supervisors asked me about an estimate. I gave you a forty-thousand-dollar range for the project. We're looking at allowing the use of broken concrete that meets the specifications for Class B riprap. That's a much cheaper product than using Class B riprap, which would require a quartzite or limestone material that would require a longer haul distance. Prior to being able to award bids on this, we will need to be able to consult with contractors, the low bid and a couple of others, to make sure that they're proposing broken concrete, that they can supply a material that will meet the specification. We do have a Corps of Engineers permits, and all permits are underway. We should be able to take off fairly quickly, but what I'm warning you is the low bid contractor may not be capable of doing the work, number one. This does require a long-reach excavator. We really don't want to have that bank torn down and benched. By benching, I mean they would cut the bank down to allow their equipment to reach over the edge. We have concerns about this because we've spent a good deal of money packing that bank, and we want to make sure that that material isn't overly disturbed. So, we prefer to see that done with the equipment that can actually reach down like your bar of craning or a long-reach backhoe.
Was that in your bid?
That information is available, was available to the contractors as far as it was on the plan set. Our first bid is from LA Carlson Contracting. Their total bid is one-hundred-twenty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-sixty dollars. LA Carlson is out of Merrill, Iowa. Let's see, again, that's one-two-nine-seven-six-zero. Their price on the revetment is thirty-five-thirty-five per ton. Our next bid is from MLS Landscape and Design.
Where are they out of, Mark?
Pardon?
Where's MLS?
I don't see where they're, they gave us that information. I'll see when I get down to the proposal, should have their address on it. It doesn't either. Grand Bell, Iowa. Their total price is one-hundred-eighty-three-thousand-two-hundred dollars. Twenty-three-two-zero-zero. Next one is Nelson of Rock of Anowa, Iowa. Their bid price is one-hundred-forty-four-thousand-six-hundred-sixty dollars. Our next bid is from Graves Construction of Spencer, Iowa. Their total bid, one-hundred-seventy-one-thousand dollars. Next, we have Clark Construction of Whiting, Iowa. The first thing I check, if you're curious, is the bond. We don't read the bid unless an appropriate bond is included. Clark's bid is one-hundred-twenty-eight-thousand dollars. Our next quote is from Legacy Corporation of Illinois of East Moline, Illinois. Their bid is two-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand dollars. Finally, we have Peterson Contractors Incorporated. Their bid is one-hundred-ninety-thousand dollars.
We have a motion.
Move send this back to the engineer for consideration and recommendation.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I think you have another hearing.
Yep.
Do you want to determine funding for a pay-for? I think it's a little bit.
Careful. Yeah, we can do that after. We have a hearing in sale of property, parcel number three-five-nine-seven-one-five twenty-five-oh-two West Twenty-second Street. Is there anyone to be heard?
If there's no one to be heard, I'd move the hearing to be closed.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll now sell the property at twenty-five-oh-two West Twenty-second. Is there anyone here to purchase that property?
Is this directed?
Karen? Yeah, step forward, sir.
My name is Dan Mavails.
And your bid, Dan?
My bid is twenty-five dollars for each parcel of property. There's two of them.
We're doing one at a time, though.
Well, we're just, we're just acting on the one. Is there a motion?
Move it. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now have a hearing in sale of parcel number three-five-nine-seven-one-six approximately twenty-five-twenty-two West Twenty-second Street.
Hearing number one, I move to close the hearing. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Daniel, your bid on this property?
Twenty-five dollars.
Is there anyone else to bid?
Move to accept. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Go with this young lady here, and she'll take your money.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Pass her on the memorandum of personnel transactions.
I move on the memorandum of personnel transactions.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now have a motion to authorize the, initiate the hiring process.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, I need a motion to authorize to extend the hours for an existing position.
Move it. Second.
Discussion.
There's an interesting write-up here. It says replacement of one part female.
This is part-time.
We're close. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Belver.
Just remember what you're doing here. You're approving this year because it already has reserves covered. Next year, it is not covered. It will be an increase if you approve next year's budget.
Correct.
And also, this position now is eligible for benefits.
Right.
Right.
That was included in the memory. Now, I need a motion to request to de-authorize accounting position in Emergency Services for a time person.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Larry. Mr. Brown?
Really, I have two items today. We authorized the chairman to sign the EMS Systems Development Grant MOU with the Iowa Department of Public Health a few weeks ago. And after doing that, they came back to us and said we want one MOU for all of the departments in the county that have grants with us and would include us in the sheriff's office. And then they wanted all of the emails and all the financial documents to go through the chair, and we thought it'd be more appropriate for that to go through the grants monitoring position, which in the auditor's office, which Gene already does all of that anyway. So then we don't have to re-sign the MOU every year we change chair positions of the board. So we did talk with Mr. Gell and his staff, and they agreed that this is an appropriate place for that responsibility to go. So it's just a cleanup of the original MOU. We're going to need authorization from the chair to sign the new MOU.
I'd move it.
Second. Discussion.
And this will be a joint with the sheriff's department and the sheriff's, where we've been working with his staff to facilitate this, so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The second item I have under B is the approval of an agreement with the Iowa Communications Network to lease fiber optic cable. Starcom, when we built it, has extra fiber optic cable from Western Iowa Tech to downtown. We are going to lease two strands of that fiber to Iowa Communications Network for them to connect their Iowa Workforce Development Office on Third and Fairmont because our fiber goes right by their front door. It'll generate about $250 a month in revenue, and that goes into the Starcom operating, offsets the Starcom budget, but we need the chairman's authorization to sign that lease.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Karen.
Morning.
Morning, Al. We're requesting that the board of supervisors move us from the basement to the fifth floor.
You're requesting us to allow you to do that because you have all the expenses involved in that.
I am requesting that you allow us.
I was going to say, I'm not carrying anything.
I'll help you.
I move it.
Second. Go ahead. Discussion. When do you want to do it, Al?
Well, there's some prep work that has to be done up there on the fifth floor. If we could have permission to go ahead and start refurbishing the space, and then we'll just move whenever we can get it all done, probably before the end of the year.
So by the first of the year, you should be up there.
Yeah, I would think so easily.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Morning.
Morning.
Dean Moore, attorney for Jackson Recovery Centers. We're before you today to ask you to please set a hearing date. We'd like to increase our bond issue request from $6 million to $7 million for the Children's and Adolescent Hospital on West Fourth Street. When we were before you previously, we thought the total cost would be $9 million. Total cost came in at $10,700,000 for the hospital, but our appraisal since then has been completed, and as completed, the appraised value is $12,700,000, and the appraisal as stabilized is $13,300,000. So we respectfully request an increase in the bond issue from the $6 million to the $7 million, and that the board please set a hearing date for that.
Any issues?
Kermit Dolan is with me today, CEO and president of Jackson Recovery.
Any issues changing that?
We have to go back through the public hearing process, but that's the first day.
I would move it.
Second.
Is that your understanding again, that we have to go back through the public hearing process to increase that?
Yes, and I think that's the December, is that December 5th? Is that when the hearing date will be set for?
I seen it in here and I forgot.
I would be included in my motion.
December 11th.
Okay, oh, because of the 15-day.
Yeah.
Notice required.
Time on there, Karen?
So we can set the time?
Made the motion.
I made the motion.
December, or December 11th?
December 11th, 10:15.
At second, that.
Excuse me, I think it says the 3rd here rather than the 11th. The 3rd of December.
I'm not giving you another option here.
It is the 3rd.
December 3rd at 10:15. That is a Tuesday, I hope.
It is a Tuesday.
December 3rd, 10:15.
10:15.
And we promise we will be back before. To get that completed.
Is there anybody who wants to be heard? Kermit?
You need to get him to go vote. I don't see a sticker on him.
Well, it's.
Oh, we don't care.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you, Dave, and support.
Good luck, Dan. There for a minute, we were behind, now we're ahead. Hearing of any individual or group, individual or group who wish to make a presentation? Is there anyone in the audience wish to be heard? Supervisors, consensers? We have a department head meeting at 10:50. We'll adjourn until then, okay?
Can I interview you?
We're going to conduct interviews for the Economic Development Director next Tuesday.
I just want to ask about the assessor's office.
We can close that, correct? Anything special we have to do or just ask them if they want it? Well, we can't ask them, then it would.
Just how human.
We just have to close it.